Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich. Commissioner Runner. Commissioner Unsell.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. I messed up last time. Do you want to call over? Over.
I'd be happy to. Mr. Warren, I request that you order that the record for tonight include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I'd ask that you administer the oath to those staff witnesses.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You have in our original packet the minutes of our April, last week, April 30th meeting, and then there was an amended document sent out. Are there any comments or corrections? Hearing none would ask for approval of the minutes.
The move.
Second.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell. Commissioner Unsell. Commissioner Vitale.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jessica. We have the subdivision site development plans in our, they were mailed out. Are there any comments or questions to those? All right, hearing none, we move on to letters of credit and performance bonds. In the packet it was mailed out, you have on, in the screen in front of you a revised letter and credit and performance bond. Number three, highlighted in yellow, the release of the cash bond of South Flim Gables phased through the amount of $15,000 from South Flim Gable properties. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we need a motion for approval.
The move.
Second.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any old business tonight? Is there any new business? Hearing none, we'll move into our public hearings. The first item tonight is docket number one, 2020-04-DP, Darryl and Danny Oliver, Barbara White's Revocable Trust, and Thieson Concrete Contracting have applied an application to amend the general development plan. Development plan conditions on portions of tract of land contained approximately 45 acres located zero sledge road and a portion of 60, the trace drive. This property is owned RM3 townhouse multifamily residential with the general development plan.
That'll be me, Chair Warren, doing the staff report for that. And I guess, then do I need to take over the, the screen? Okay. All right, I'm gonna do that now. Okay, thank you all for bearing with me here. I think we got it now, okay. So we had a pre-application conference on March 4th for the properties used to be outlined there in yellow. Chair Warren's already told us where they are and that they are zoned RM3 townhouse multifamily residential. The, the properties are agricultural and vacant. As you can see around there, most of the area, it's right there at the Warren County, Allen County line, is agricultural, single-family residential, and then you have some vacant tracts in the area as well. Future land use map is agriculture. We'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second, but wanted to note that. And then we will bring up, bring up this, we can reference it as we go along if we need, but the applicants are requesting this amendment to the general development plan in order to allow up to six single-family residential lots on the property. If you've got your staff report, you'll see there that with the proposed density, this is 45.18 acres, it'd be .15 dwelling units per acre. The development history, agriculture was the original zoning, and the portion of the property subject to the amendment was rezoned from agriculture to R3 in 1983. And that zone was then converted to RM3 in 2001. On the compatibility with comprehensive plan, the properties are designated as agriculture on the future land use map. And although the RM3 zone is not listed as a potentially compatible zone in this designation, the proposed development plan amendment would result in less density than what is permitted under the current development plan, and therefore, flume amendment was not required with this application. This body should determine if the proposed changes to the development plan are compatible with the surrounding area. I'll note also on the first page of your staff report, the compatibility with surrounding development, there are generally adequate facilities and infrastructure with exceptions noted regarding water availability and road width, and we'll talk about in just a second. The majority of the development is heavily wooded. As you can see, from the, from the concept here, you can tell under the green there and from the area we looked at earlier. There's also a small sinkhole located within the development. I'll move on to the site characteristics review. Lay out lot sizes and setbacks. Development will be developed as shown on this plan with lot sizes ranging from 2.75 to 10.16 acres. The proposed development plan conditions limit the maximum to six lots with a minimum lot size of two acres. The zoning ordinance requires that single-family development in the RM3 zone adhere to the RS1C development standards, including a seven and a half side yard setback and a 10-foot rear yard setback. And one of the development plan conditions requires a 100-foot front yard setback along Sledge Road. Also note that property has fringe on Sledge Road, which is a 12-foot wide road, which is less than the 18-foot minimum standard for county roads. Water adequacy, the development is served by Warren County water and doesn't have adequate water flow to meet the fire protection requirements, but the number of lots and size of those lots proposed is exempt from this requirement. The properties contain soil types that are classified as prime farmland and farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and the properties contain soil types that are classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. In the site design and compatibility review, just note the surrounding architectural features. There's a mixture of one and one and a half story homes in the area. Home sizes range from 1,024 square feet to 3,260 square feet with an average home size of 2,252 square feet and a median home size of 2,331 square feet. The applicants are proposing a minimum square footage of 1,300 square feet. For building materials, the majority of homes at the trace at Base Ford subdivision are comprised of brick with concrete block foundations. Other homes in the area are comprised of vinyl. And the applicants have addressed building materials, I'll read that. Actually, I'll go ahead and go on to development plan conditions now. So you have there in bold the proposed changes to these conditions tonight. The, the binding elements, there were four originally, and so those have been removed in place of these total of 10 that I'll go ahead and read now. Number one, these development plan conditions hereby replace the previous binding elements. Number two, the proposed development will be all single-family dwelling units with a maximum lot size of two acres with a maximum of six residential lots. Number three, minimum square footage of all single-family dwelling units shall be 1,300 square feet. Number four, maximum height of single-family dwelling unit shall not exceed two stories. Number five, building material shall consist of brick, stone, vinyl, or other, or modern cementous material. Foundation shall be of brick, stone, or split-faced block. No plain-faced cement block shall be used on foundations. Number six, no more than 50% of the home shall be of, shall be 100% vinyl. Number seven, all homes shall face the public street. Number eight, there shall be a 100-foot front building setback. Number nine, all driveway locations will be coordinated with the Warren County Public Works Department prior to installation. And number 10, trees on the property shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Any trees over six-inch caliber that are healthy and in good growing condition within 10 feet of a property line will be retained. So going on to page four of your staff report, you'll see section 3128 of the zoning ordinance that talks about the findings to amend the general, to amend the development plan, including this statement that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area. And so the applicants, they submitted the following narrative to address those findings. "With the closing of the trace golf course, there is no longer a desire to construct a multifamily condominium-style residential dwelling units. To have such type of development now would be out of character for the development pattern that has been created in the surrounding area. Sewer has never been extended to the property, and there is no proposal to do so in the near future. The applicant is requesting that the property be developed with large, single-family lots using the attached development plan conditions." Going on to the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 14 items, nine of which may comply. I've noted here that there are three that do not comply, but I'll reference directly LU111, LU112 that the development plan amendment is not consistent with the flume and doesn't comply with those two because the RM3 zone is not listed as a potentially compatible zone. However, the proposed development plan amendment would result, as I mentioned earlier, in less density than what is permitted under the current development plan. So just wanted to note that, that that was why that was included, that they do not comply. This body should determine if the proposed changes to the plan are compatible with the area and if it complies with LU113. This body should determine if the proposed changes will result in a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the area, character of the area, and LU2 and LU21. A development generally complies with LU214, PR17, NCR116, which will with the preservation of trees. The proposal does not comply with CF26, as the applicants did not address onsite sewage disposal system, system to be located on the proposed lots. And the planning commission should determine compliance with NCR241. We mentioned the width of Sledge Road and that the property is served by less than 250 gallons per minute of water. So this body should determine whether or not the proposed lots will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. An HN21, HN4, this body should determine that the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type and that the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. With that, I'm gonna go back to the first page of your staff report and just go over the points to consider. Again, about the, the RM3 zone not being a compatible zoning designation, but that this amendment would result in less density than what's currently permitted. The proposed amendment complies with the majority of the criteria addressed in the site characteristics review and a majority of the review criteria for site design. And compatibility to propose changes to the general development plan should be determined by the planning commission. So that is all I have for the staff report. I see the applicant has joined us, and so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
So Monica, I mean, really, this is a, in a lot of ways, this is kind of a down zone or a, because of the density and everything, correct?
Yeah, it'd be fair to say this is a, a less dense development than what was originally envisioned.
Okay.
Monica, could, could you help me understand? It's, it indicates an RM3 zoning. I think I heard you tell us that the current land use was agriculture and the future land use map was agriculture. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so how could we have a, a current RM3 zoning and a, and a future land use map that those two could conflict?
Well, the, the R, the RM3, formerly known as R3, that rezoning happened in 1983. And so the requirements were not the same at the time. So today, for a multifamily development, of course, that would require sewer and, and, you know, improvements that are not located out here at this time, and, you know, we have no way to know when that would be. So, so at the time, that was in 83, that could be rezoned in a way, but that's kind of why you see that outlier of an RM3 zoning way out in the county.
Is there a reason to leave it as R3 rather than go to something like RE? Residential estate?
Um, for, and Rachel, you may want to jump in here, for, to go to RE, how many lots would have been? How, like, how would that have, have affected the number of?
That, that would have been an option, and Mr. Oliver may want to speak more to this, but this was essentially the quickest way to achieve his goal as far as the number of lots, because the development plan amendment only requires planning commission action and doesn't have to be forwarded to the legislative bodies.
Okay, and so the, does the, do the planning conditions indicate how many lots?
I'm sorry?
Do the plant, do the development, do those conditions stipulate the number of lots? So another way to ask this question would be, if someone later bought this property and they have an RM3 zoning, could they increase the number of lots?
No, the development plan condition number two does state that the maximum would be six residential lots.
See, thank you. Okay, no more questions for me.
Monica, I imagine you didn't have, you haven't had any opposition to this?
I'm not aware of any. I don't know if Jessica or Rachel have got any phone calls, but I have not received any myself.
None on my end.
Okay.
We had one call, but they were just asking what they were proposing. They were not opposed to it.
Okay.
One last thing that I have a question on. They did not address the onsite sewage disposal systems to be used on the located lots. They would have to have a sewer, a septic tank to get approved by the Warren County Health Department, correct?
They would definitely have to have something. So, yeah, septic tank, I mean, that's all you could get out there. The applicant, I don't know if he has spoken to the health department yet. He may be able to chime in and, and add to that if, if he's aware yet what, what they might require of him.
But you're not gonna get a, you're not gonna get a building department without a septic tank. Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any other questions for the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, is there any, we've asked this, but is there any opposition in, on this meeting tonight? If not, does the applicant have anything they would like to?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sir, please, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name's Darryl Oliver. My address, 2711 Maple Avenue, Bowlin Green, Kentucky, 42103.
And do you swear to tell the truth, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments to the questions or the questions staff made?
Well, I was gonna try to address the septic tank issue. With the size of those lots, you know, if you, there's, I think there's three tracts that are 10 acres and there's, well, you, you can see the size of those, and without knowing exactly where the houses are gonna sit, it's kind of impossible to do a site evaluation on a tract of land that size. You could do one, but then if they set the house somewhere else, it wouldn't work for, for that evaluation. So we talked about that, and I think we all kind of agreed that it would, it would be best to wait till we got ready to build a house to get that. And there was one other thing I was gonna ask. I heard this, and I probably heard it wrong, because my, my connection's not really good with you guys, but one of the, the restrictions about the site being 50%, what was that saying? If you don't mind repeating that.
What, what are you referring to, Mr. Oliver?
The, probably number six.
Oh, development plan condition number six, the way it reads is no more than 50% of the home shall be 100% vinyl.
So basically, he's wanting to put three of the houses vinyl and 1,300 square feet, and the neighbors don't have any concern about that?
We have not received any calls. Now, this is, this is just no more than 50%, so that would be, that would be the limit.
I think what Ms. Clark's saying, he could build three vinyl-sided, vinyl-sided homes, but the other three would have to be a brick, stone, or modern material. Is that correct?
According to the way these development plan conditions are working, then that, that would be the, the maximum of what.
Is that what the applicant is playing?
On all these homes, and that's why, we've, we've done most of this meeting and all this paperwork by phone because of this virus. So I wanted to clarify that. I don't know exactly how y'all interpret that. I just want it to be understood that we're gonna have brick, stone, vinyl, all that. Some, maybe some hardy board and all that amongst all these houses. So I just want that to be clear.
Well, Mr. Oliver, the way that this reads, going back to that, if, if you built six homes, 50% of it could be vinyl, 50% of it could be modern stone brick or hardy board modern material. If you built three homes, all vinyl, the other three homes then would have to be brick vinyl, brick, stone, or modern material. Am I saying that wrong?
Yeah, I think so.
It says that no more than 50% of the home shall be 100% vinyl. The other three homes can have some vinyl on it, just not 100% vinyl.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's correct. I just wanted to be sure that I understood what we were, we all understood what we were proposing.
Yes, so, so three of the homes can be, three of the homes can be 100% vinyl, and then the other three can have vinyl on them.
Okay. So Darrell, the question I think is gonna be asked of you, would you be, would you be willing to change that and say that maybe only 25% or 30% of each home would be vinyl?
I, I think the way we got it written is the way I'd like to, to do it. And I think that's plenty, I mean, if you, if you know all the houses are there, that's kind of, well, they're just not there anyway. So I think with the way we're wanting to do this, it'll be, as far as looks, it will look as well as anything around.
You're muted, Christian.
Sorry, I mean, I don't have a problem. I, I, I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, these are 10, some of these are 10-acre lots, they're big lots, you know, and probably in the neighborhood it's in, in the area, the vinyl will not, will be, will be, will be okay.
Commissioners, any other comments? So Mr. Oliver, you're clear, and all the commissioners are clear on, on the development plan conditions?
Yes.
Yes. Excuse me.
Is he planning to do the houses 1,300 square feet or larger?
We've already got three houses that are under contract pending this approval. And, no, they're all much larger. They're probably, I don't, I mean, I could get you the exacts, but they're, they're probably closer to 3,000 square than, than they are 1,300. I think the smallest one that we've got on contract is probably 1,700 square feet. And the, the biggest one's probably basement, no, it's probably closer to 3,500 square feet. With the price of this property, it's, it's almost impossible to do 1,300 square feet. I don't even know why we use that number, but.
Would you want to increase that, the binding out of the plan conditions?
I mean, if, if it's needed, I don't think anybody's gonna buy this price property and build 1,300 square feet on it.
So Darrell, how about we change, how about we change it from 1,300 to 1,700?
How about we just split it difference and say 1,500? Would that be fair?
Fair to me.
Like 2,000.
Wait, Sandy's already saying he's got one under contract that's 1,700.
Yeah. I've got one lot up there that's, that's not as good a lot as the rest of them. And I think for me to be able to, because it's gonna be a cheaper lot, I think 1,500 square foot on that lot would be very acceptable. I mean, if, I, I would agree to 1,500 square feet, I think that's fair enough.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
And we, we have a change to our, to our general development plan from 1,300 square feet to a minimum of 1,500 square feet. And everybody's clear on the vinyl, 50%, 100% vinyl. Correct? Yes. Are there any other comments before we call for a motion? Hearing none would ask for a motion to, a motion to approve or deny.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development amendment, docket number 2024-DP. Based upon a testimony and documents presented at this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and actions items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes with economic, physical, social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request the findings, the fact, and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell. Commissioner Unsell.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am, motion's approved. Second, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Our second item, thank you, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Second item tonight is, uh, twenty twenty sixteen Z County. I'm sorry. Okay, our second item tonight is twenty twenty sixteen Z County. The estate of Margaret Stoll, Barry Stoll, and Brick Stoll have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately three point four five acres located at thirty-nine seventy and forty-fourteen Browning Road from Ag to RE Residential State to RE Residential State with the general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Warren. I'll be presenting this case. And as you just mentioned, the properties we're considering this evening are located there at the corner of Browning Road and Galloway's Mill Road. The current zoning of the properties, uh, is split between agriculture and residential estate. The current use of both properties is single-family residential. And the future land use designation is rural village. The rural village future land use category is intended, intended to provide for the continued vitality of the existing commercial and residential mixed-use areas found in the smaller rural agricultural centers throughout Warren County. The rural village brings a sense of community and identification to the surrounding rural areas with an emphasis on providing essential goods and services to rural residents, but is not intended as an employment designation for urban residents. Neighborhood scale commercial uses are encouraged as pockets of mixed-use developments. Commercial uses should be limited in size and scale and only allow uses permitted in the zones outlined in the future land use category table. When proposed as part of a mixed-use development, commercial components should only comprise, be comprised of no more than ten percent of any such development. Standalone commercial developments should not exceed more than twenty-five percent of any area designated as rural village, and limited moderate density multifamily uses may be appropriate in some areas if limited in size and scale. Compatibility should be assessed by applying the policies in LU one-one-three in conjunction with the general development plan and by applying specific policies found in focal point plans, area plans, corridor studies, or any other plans created and approved by the planning commission. So, jumping on to our site characteristics review, uh, this application, the, the reason for the request involves, uh, the shuffling of some property. If you note the existing configuration, it's more of an L shape for the lot on the corner um, with this smaller lot here. Um, the proposal this evening, if approved, would allow, uh, the properties to be kinda squared up and, uh, the lot one would then just divide the two properties almost straight down the middle. So, um, the purpose of this application is really just to, to add part of a lot, lot one here to lot two and create more of a rectangular, uniform-shaped lot. Under transportation infrastructure, we have noted that the properties have frontage again on both Browning Road and Galloway's Mill Road. Galloway's Mill Road is sixteen feet in width, which is less than the county standard. Uh, we have also noted that there is a clump of mature trees, roughly a half an acre located in the central portion of the property at forty-fourteen. If I jump back to the aerial, you can see what I'm referencing. Whoops, I went too far. Going the wrong way now. Sorry about that. Kind of in this area here. Sinkholes are also known to exist in the vicinity. And with that, I'm gonna kinda skip down to the proposed development plan conditions. There are two existing homes on the property. I will, uh, just kinda highlight some features about those homes. Uh, the existing residence at forty-fourteen Browning Road is two thousand seventy-seven square feet, and the existing residence at thirty-nine seventy Browning Road is seventeen hundred and nineteen square feet. Uh, building materials, the, uh, the existing residence at thirty-nine seventy Browning Road is vinyl with a brick foundation. The existing residence at forty-fourteen Browning Road is brick with a stone foundation. Um, and so the development plan conditions that are proposed this evening would only apply in the event that either of the structures are replaced in the future. Um, there is no plan to demolish or replace either of the homes at this time. Um, but this is just kinda thinking way into the future. If that were to ever happen, uh, these would be the conditions that the properties would be bound by. So I'm gonna go through these really quick. Number one, any new primary residential structure on the property shall face Browning Road. Two, a minimum square footage of fifteen hundred square feet for any new residential structure. Three, any new residential structure shall be set back at least forty feet from the front property line. Four, any new primary residence on the property shall utilize eighty percent brick, ephist, stone, masonry, cementitious material, or other modern architectural materials such as vinyl, wooden, and/or aluminum siding. No exposed plain-faced block will be allowed as a primary siding material on the residential structure excluding foundations. Five, there shall be a maximum of two lots on the property. Six, entrances must be coordinated with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Seven, the existing residences will utilize the existing septic systems located on the properties. In the event that either of the existing residences are ever replaced, the Bayonne River District Health Department shall inspect the current system and/or issue a permit for a new septic system on the property. Eight, any existing or found sinkholes within the proposed development will be identified and repaired prior to any development above said sinkhole. And last, existing mature trees on the property will be preserved when feasible based on location, type, and condition. Moving on to the focus twenty thirty category review, staff evaluated eighteen items. Eleven of these items were found to be in compliance. None of the items were found to be out of compliance, and there were seven items that the planning commission should determine and evaluate for compliance. First, LU one-one-three, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU two and LU two point one, which look at quality of development and character of the area. Next, LU two point nine, which looks at the character of the Browning community. And then on the last page of the staff report, we have NCR two point four and NCR two point four point three, which look at compatibility and contribution to the character of the Browning community. And last, NCR two point four point one, which considers potential development pressure on the countryside. With that, I'll jump back to our points to consider on page one. The first of those, uh, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map and the rural village category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. The proposed general development plan also complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance with an exception noted regarding the road width of Galloway's Mill Road. That is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Are there any comments from commissioners? Is there any opposition to this amendment? Is the applicant on the line and would like to make any comments?
I have no comments.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Your name?
Barry Stoll. I have no comments.
Mr. Stoll, just for the record, what's your address, please, sir?
Three nine seven zero Browning Road.
Okay, and you're, you swear to tell the truth? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stoll. Are there any comments, uh, any questions of Mr. Stoll? There are no, no questions from the commissioners, no opposition. In Mr. Stoll's report, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with the condition upon a general development plan, document number twenty twenty sixteen Z County. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with, consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our third item tonight is, uh, twenty twenty nineteen Z County. John and Andy Starnes, Evelyn Porchesca, and the City County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone a portion of land containing approximately fifteen point fifteen acres located at eight ninety Mount Olivet-Gurken Road from RE Residential State to agriculture, and a portion of the tract of land containing approximately fifteen point fifteen acres located at eight forty-four Mount Olivet-Gurken Road, Ag to RE Residential State.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We will go through this fairly quickly. As you saw in our last hearing, there were a couple of agenda items that had involved land swaps or a property acquisition that resulted in split zonings of the property. Um, I'll just jump straight to the zoning map. It's a little bit difficult to see, but essentially, if I get to the exhibit, um, this is the portion of the properties that was swapped. And so, uh, the consideration this evening would essentially establish a single zone for both properties. We evaluated four comprehensive plan items, and they were all found to be in compliance. That's all of that.
Thank you, Rachel. Any comments from the commissioners? Is there anyone in opposition to this zoning change? Does the applicant have anything they would like to add? Is the applicant available?
Chair Warren, this, this is, I should have mentioned that before. This is one of those applications where the planning commission is a co-applicant. So that, the property owner is not present.
Should, should, should know that. Thank you, Rachel. Hearing, uh, no comments, no opposition, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, twenty twenty nineteen Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with, with adopted focus twenty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jessica. Our next item for tonight is twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty Z County, Mount Pleasant Baptist Church. Tanya and Clifton Cawthorn and the City County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone a portion of tracts of land containing approximately one point four five acres located at zero and one twenty-five Sandstone Way from Ag to RE Residential State with the general development plan to RE Residential.
Thank you, Chair Warren. Uh, this is another one of those cleanup situations, so I won't, uh, go too much into the staff report. But essentially, uh, this portion of the property right here was acquired to be added to the lot with the residence. Um, and so that left this property split zoned, Ag and RE. So it would be establishing a single zone for both the, the, the residence, um, the lot that the residence is on, and then also for the remaining cemetery piece that's, that's here in this general area. Uh, I'll jump to the exhibit. And again, uh, this is just a cleanup to establish a single zone for both properties. We evaluated four items from the comprehensive plan, and all items were found to be in compliance.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments? Is there any opposition to this proposal? And like our last, our last, uh, zoning, it is a proposal from also the city planning, City County Planning Commission, so the applicant does not need to be on the call unless they're there. So I guess not.
You are here.
You are there?
Just muted.
We are.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And your name, please?
Tanya Cawthorn, one twenty-five Sandstone Way, Albaton.
And, uh, you swear to tell the truth, Ms., uh, Ta- I mean, Tanya, do you swear to tell the truth? Do you have anything you would like to add?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you being on our calls tonight. So, hearing no other comments, questions, nor opposition, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, document twenty 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 Z County. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by the compliance of the objection and actions items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The motion approved. Uh, our last item tonight, is there any discussion items? Ben, do you have, or any of the other staff have anything they would like to present tonight?
Nothing specific. Uh, I've mentioned earlier, but this does catch us up for the ones that, uh, have agreed to, you know, go ahead in this format. As far as proceeding forward, we should be roughly back on our regular meeting date and schedule now. But as far as having face-to-face meetings, of course, we have no, no way of knowing what time that might, that might come back, uh, into existence. But other than that, I have nothing, other than wishing Commissioner Booker to happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, uh.
What, what restaurant are you going to tonight, Christian?
Montana Grill. Pick it up.
We arrive.
Anytime you want. More, uh, more the merrier. I'm not, I won't, I won't hold us to ten people tonight.
Ben, did everything go okay after our last meeting in the items?
I didn't catch what you said.
I said, did everything go okay after the last meeting with the items that we decided upon and took action on?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, congratulations to you and Stephen Quarter then.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no other items, we appreciate everybody taking time tonight to be on, on the call, and, uh, everybody have a great evening.
You, everybody have a good night.
Bye-bye.